Well, now that I can actually see my agenda, we will go ahead and call to order this special meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors for Thursday, April 11th. We will begin this morning with a flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes, and welcome back. Glad to see you here looking rested and ready. So, we do have one item before us today. This is a continuation of the item that we heard on Tuesday, where our board is looking to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Supervisor Montgomery. In that last meeting, we had a couple folks stand up and talk to us a little bit. And as is our board practice, even if we have closed public comment on an item, if the item is continued, we always allow for additional public comment from folks who have not addressed the board, did not have an opportunity... I'm sorry? From folks who did not have an opportunity to address the board previously. Oh, that's Tahoe. Tahoe, that's what we just heard. Yeah, your mic is live up there. So, we will take public comment from people who did not get an opportunity to address the board on Tuesday. So, we will go ahead and open this item back up before we jump into public comment. Board members have any questions or comments? I see none. All right. Is there anybody... We'll go ahead and start up in Tahoe, since your mic is hot. Is there anybody in Tahoe that wishes to address the board this morning who did not get a chance to speak to us on Tuesday?
Supervisor Euler, we do have some people here to give comment, but the sound, the audio coming into Tahoe is really bad.
Okay, well, rest assured, we can hear you. Okay? So, we'll go ahead and... We'll go ahead and open it up to you first.
They just fixed it.
Well, they have it down because I can hear myself on your microphone.
They have it fixed.
Okay. They turned it down so that we don't get the feedback. So, go ahead. Your mic is open alive. Please identify yourself and try to keep your comment for three minutes.
My name is Ron Parsons. I'm a business owner and property owner in Tahoe City, and I have operations over in Tahoe Vista. I'd like to speak in favor of selecting a Placer County rep who represents the entire district for District Five. I don't think we actually have a lot of separate issues. I think the county has issues across the great divide there at the summit. And we need a candidate that has that experience of looking both ways. I believe that Cindy is such a candidate, Cindy Gustafson. My name is... I already told you my name. Okay. So, the Tahoe issues, I believe, I've heard conversation about how, well, why does Tahoe, you know, need a representative? And I don't think we do. I think we need a representative that represents the entire county. However, a person like Cindy also brings to the table those relevant issues from up here down to Auburn. For example, up in this area, we're looking at major developments in Homewood Squaw Valley, North Star, Tahoe City, Kings Beach, Sugar Bowl, and Martis Valley West. Those are going to be impacts on sales tax, impacts on TOT, highway AD traffic, fire routes and safety, and even water. I think it's... Those issues, although they may be specific to those new projects or reinvestments in this community, I think that those are issues that are similar to the ones that are being faced down in Auburn. So, I think her expertise in these areas and what she's been through will help her meet the needs of the entire county. Cindy's worked on all these issues. And again, while they've been... While her focus may have recently been local to Tahoe, they're actually fairly specific to issues that apply throughout the county. I also think that her interaction in solving some of these issues in her past positions has created a lot of interaction with state and federal. And again, those relationships and that interaction, I believe, will serve her well in her role as a District Five Supervisor. So, I'm wholeheartedly endorsing Cindy for those reasons because I think she's bigger than Tahoe. She's bigger than Placer County, but it's an ideal fit for a supervisor.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else in Tahoe? And I'm sorry, I can't see who you are. So, go ahead and identify yourself. We'll need you up by that microphone, please, so that we can hear you. Why don't you come right on up? And is that Ellie? I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
Ellie, you already addressed us on Tuesday, Ellie. So, we are limiting public comment to just those people who did not address our board on Tuesday, on this item.
Okay. Well, I had a comment from the Commissioner. Mayor reminded me of supporting Anders Haugey. And I would like to just comment on that.
I'm sorry. We're not opening debate between commenters. That's just not going to happen. And so, you did have an opportunity to address our board with your comments on Tuesday. Those comments are on the record. So, thank you very much at this time, Ellie. Is there anybody else in Tahoe that did not address our board on Tuesday? Yes, sir? I'm sorry?
Supervisor Euler, Bob McClintock here from Tahoe City. And I am a business owner in Tahoe City, as well as property owner. And I also support Cindy Gustafson for Supervisor District Five. I think she will represent District Five as well as all of Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in Tahoe? Is the young lady that just stood up? Nope? Okay. All right. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble seeing people. I don't really recognize... So, we're going to leave Tahoe, bring it back down here to Auburn. Anybody here in Auburn who did not speak to the board on Tuesday that wishes to address the board this morning? This would be your time to do so. Go ahead and stand on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Bill Radakowicz, and I'm here to support Kevin. Kevin and Hattie have been friends of ours for some time now. And I want to tell you a little bit about my impression of Kevin. Oh, by the way, it was his birthday a couple days ago, so happy birthday, Kevin. Kevin's assumed a lot of positions here in the Auburn community. He was CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. He was mayor on the city council for, I think, eight years. He's very involved in wildlife prevention. And he's very committed to this community. He's intelligent, deliberate, thoughtful, and hardworking. This is who Kevin is. Who he isn't, he's not really a politician. He doesn't promise things that he doesn't follow through with. He's the real thing. I have property up in Tahoe as well as here. And I know that Kevin would do a good job in Tahoe as well as he has in Auburn. He's very involved here with fire safe and fire prevention, which is very important, especially to people who live on the canyon here. So, my support goes to Kevin, and I hope you agree and support him as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Stand right on up. Don't be shy. Because I know you've historically been shy.
Okay. Well, I am a little bit nervous. Thank you. My name is Paula Selig. I think I know most everybody here. I have known Kevin a lot of years. I came to Auburn in 1967. Not Auburn, excuse me, Placer County. And I've lived in the 5th District all of those years. I still live in the 5th District. And I am so thrilled that Kevin is a candidate for this seat that is open on the Board of Supervisors right there. I have worked with Kevin on several different fire safe councils throughout the years. And I was the secretary for the Auburn Fire Safe Council for a few years. And I had the distinct pleasure of watching Kevin work his magic. And whenever you can get the BLM to come around to your side of the aisle and understand what we're talking about, about the fire safe area on the American River Canyon, and get them to allow the folks of Auburn to get out there and clean up that mess that was such a fire hazard all those years. And it actually, I think it took a couple of years before they even listened to him. But he was... He stuck to it, and he got it done. He and Bob Snyder and I can't remember all the rest... Hi, Bob. The rest of the guys that were on that fire safe council. But I was so... I am so proud to have been part of that myself. Kevin has, as Dick mentioned, he has a wide scope of information and public service to not only Placer County, to the state of California, and the city of Auburn. And I heartily recommend Kevin Hanley as that seat, that empty seat up there. Thank you very much for listening to me and hope you agree with the rest of us.
Thank you, Paula. Whomever, just step right on up.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. My name is Richard Hall. I'm a local attorney and business owner. And while you have many fine candidates here, many of whom I know and respect, I'm here to support Kevin Hanley for this position. Kevin and I have had the opportunity to work together when I was a board member for 10 years on the Chamber of Commerce and president of the Chamber of Commerce. I worked closely with him on a variety of topics. I know him to be a bit of a policy wonk, actually. But I've also known him to be very open-minded and listening to arguments pro and con on any given topic. And his commitment to this community is absolutely unparalleled. I can't think of any finer representative for District Five. I've been in District Five myself, lived here for five... Since 1995, and I strongly support him. I won't take my entire three minutes. I just want you to know, I think he'll be a great supervisor in District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I jumped out of my seat three times.
And the third time was the charm for you. It worked out.
I was determined. Well, I too am here to support Kevin Hanley.
Need your name for the record, ma'am.
Oh, my name is Fran Kehoe.
Thank you.
And how I know Kevin? Well, I was appointed to District Five Fire Safe Council Representative. And so, I ended up working with Kevin. Worked a lot of projects with him. And I just wanted to say, I don't need to talk about his qualifications because you have that all written down. But I've worked alongside Kevin. And one of the things I've seen him do is able to talk to people, listen to what they're worried about, concerned about. He encourages participation on how to resolve a problem, which is really important when you're working with a community, whether it's here or Tahoe. I have no doubt that Kevin can work across county barriers here. During the time I worked with Kevin on the Fire Safe Council in 2015, we were awarded the Auburn State Community Award for our Fire Safe Council work. And that would not have happened had he not been doing the leadership of our team. And that's another important thing. Teamwork is really important, and Kevin just does encourage that. He makes you realize you can do things, work together. The other thing I like about Kevin is he's very visible in the community. And he's out there either organizing, planning, or attending. And I think the important part of that is, I feel he would be a supervisor that would be accessible. And I think that's important when you're working in communities. And you need to know, you can walk up and talk to a person just like he's your neighbor. You've known him forever. And Kevin's that kind of person. Anytime Kevin was asked to do something, and I witnessed this many times on the Fire Safe Council, people would come and say, "I'm concerned about this." If Kevin said, "I'll write a letter," that letter got written. He is the kind of person, if you ask him to get something done, you don't have to walk away wondering, "Did it get done? Will it get done?" It does get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Good morning. Chairman Euler and members, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Richard Mercero, and I'm pleased to come and speak in support of my longtime friend and colleague, Kevin Hanley. I've worked with Kevin since 1991 through 2012 in the California State Legislature. And in all those years, I've known virtually no one who has the character, the probity, the public spiritedness, the work ethic, and the breadth and depth of knowledge that my friend and colleague has shown. I worked with Kevin when he was a budget analyst in the California State Senate, worked with him when he was the chief consultant to the Assembly Committee on Insurance. I was the chief consultant to the Revenue and Taxation Committee at the time. And then, I had the privilege of being the director of the Office of Policy, where Kevin was one of our outstanding colleagues. I think it was perfect to follow the lady who just spoke because she spoke to so many of the characters and qualities that I saw in Kevin all those years. One thing, when Kevin was a member, was the mayor of Auburn and on the Auburn City Council, he would come to work at the crack of dawn, put in his day, go to the Auburn Town Council, convene the meeting, be part of that participation, then drive back down the hill to the Capitol to work till midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning during budget negotiations, committee days, and the end of the legislative session. His work ethic is only surpassed by his character and his integrity. It's been an honor and privilege to be his colleague and his friend for all these many years. Placer County and District Five would be remarkably well-served to have him as a supervisor. So, I thank you for the opportunity to do that. I also was compelled to, this morning, I got a phone call, Senior Chief Robert Mercero, longtime Placer County resident, ultra marathoner. Could not be here today. He's teaching his elementary school class. But he also wanted to acknowledge and thank Kevin for his tenure in the United States Navy. He and his family also support Kevin as the next supervisor. Thank you for your time and attention, folks.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? All right. After this gentleman, is there anybody who wishes to speak? Yes? Okay.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Stuart Perry. I live with my wife Stephanie at 5560 Fawn Ridge Road. We've lived in the district for many years ourselves. In fact, we've had 15 years up in Tahoe City. In those days, I knew Larry Sevenson and his service to the county. I've met many of you in your service to the county. I can't really add anything more to what everybody said. I agree with all of it. It's all very true about Kevin. But I can tell you, over the course of my career, I've worked with a number of different politicians, got to know them, observed their courage and maybe a little tenacity once in a while. And I think that Kevin would serve well in the empty seat that you're appointing today. You have a hard choice. There's a lot of qualified candidates. My wife and I will certainly support anyone who's decided upon. But we happen to think that Kevin is very well-versed in his career and will serve the county well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir. Well, we've got a few more people.
Good morning. My name is Terry Mornan, homeowner here in Auburn. I'm here to support Kevin. I support, agree with everything that's been said so far this morning. Kevin convinced me to join the Firewise... To join the Auburn Area Fire Safe Council. And I watched him achieve a lot of good things, grants and extra funding. And we did a lot of very important projects that we were successful. He was... He sort of pushed me into pursuing a Firewise for our community, for our neighborhood. And he was a big part of that neighborhood as well. I fully support Kevin, and I think he'd do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, this gentleman's standing, and then there were a couple of others. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Michaels. Thank you for letting me share a few of my comments with you. I also support Kevin Hanley. I probably don't need to follow this tough act up here. Everybody's covered everything pretty well. But I've known Kevin for about 10 years. He's a neighbor. And then, during that time, I've watched him go from being a legislative consultant to the state, to the city's councilperson and mayor, and also the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce. So, he knows the community well. And what's so important to me, I've had over 40 years in state and local government experience as well. And what I've found, that if you don't know the players and you don't know how the process works, you end up with a chaos. And I don't think I probably have to go any further with that. It's one of the things Kevin is very thoughtful, but he's also very resourceful and works behind the lines and is eminently responsible for the relationship that the city has with the Bureau of Reclamation, the memorandum of understanding we have with them to help protect what we're doing. And probably most importantly to me, is over the last four years I've served with Kevin on the Greater Auburn Fire Safe Council. And he's worked very closely with everybody, including the county, to develop a wildfire prevention plan. And I think it's really critical that he's involved. I think for all the other reasons, he's very knowledgeable about government and will treat everything fairly. But from my own selfish viewpoint, I want to see that wildfire prevention plan developed.
Thank you. I saw a gentleman over here, and then I believe...
My name is Bill Wharton. I'm a resident of District Five and currently on the City of Auburn's Economic Development Commission. As I listened to all the comments here this morning, I started scratching off the things on my list that I wouldn't want to repeat for you. But suffice it to say that I've worked with Kevin closely in several different circumstances through the city and the chamber. And I believe that he is an excellent candidate for this position. And I fully support the action of putting him in that position. And I would appreciate your support that way. I know Kevin will do a great job. And I think it's a great opportunity for the county as well, to get someone in that position that will support the county District Five fully, not just the city of Auburn or the Auburn area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're getting down to it. We got a couple others?
Good morning, Chair Euler and Supervisors. I'm Matt Spockley, City Councilman for the City of Auburn. I don't need to reiterate all of the things you've heard about Mr. Hanley and the great things he's done in our area as it pertains most specifically to the fire prevention work that he's done. I think when you look at District Five, it's a very large district. I've been a resident of District Five since I and my wife moved back up to the Auburn area. Kevin's been very involved since day one that we got here. He was already on the city council. And he's a great advocate for District Five and for things that are critically important to us in District Five. Again, the fire safety work that he's been so key to making big advances to help not only the City of Auburn, but all of District Five. If you look at the breakdown of voters in District Five, over three-quarters of the voters are in the Auburn Colfax area. Three-quarters of the voters need representation down here. I think Kevin's the guy to do that. I was a big supporter of Jennifer Montgomery. She did a fantastic job representing District Five from where she lived up in the midpoint between Tahoe and the Auburn area. In 17 months, we're going to have an opportunity to vote and make that decision as an electorate, as a District Five constituent. I, again, think that three-quarters of the voting representation in this area needs a strong leader sitting up there with you all. And Kevin Hanley is that person. So, I urge you to please support Kevin Hanley for the District Five appointment. Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir?
Hi. I'm Robin Enos. I'm here to represent myself, the Newcastle Television Show, The Time Traveler, and The Bloody Parrot. Those two I've locked in the barn because they thought it was about them today. It's about Kevin Hanley. And I'm backing Kevin Hanley because he's done wonderful work for this community. We've had him on the radio show a few times. He's always talking about the community, his efforts that he puts in. And of course, as everybody knows, all of the different organizations he's been part of and/or the mayor and the council. So, I just want to say that I'm throwing my hat in there for Kevin. I think he's going to do a fine job for District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. I will just begin by saying, as I did at the close of the last one, I want to thank each of the applicants who took the time to apply and submit your written application. Those of you who took the opportunity to do the video application. We have a number of very good, qualified applicants who have applied for this position. We don't have 20 seats to fill. We have one seat to fill. So, it falls upon the four of us to make that decision. If there's any comments or deliberations from my colleagues, I will start with Supervisor Holmes, who I know was here for about four hours yesterday reviewing video from the day before. So, Supervisor Holmes, any thoughts from you?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's nice to see you all again. I want to thank the board for holding this meeting today while I was on the disabled list. Please let me thank all of those who expressed concern for my well-being. It really means a lot. So, thank you for that. So, I want to let you know that I did watch Tuesday's board item yesterday afternoon, including public comment. And I want to thank Greg Courier and Jerry Kelly of our staff for putting together the video for me on short notice. They do a great job. I was impressed with the quantity of the applicants and by the quality of the applicants. It speaks well of their diverse background, and many of whom have a history of community engagement. And I'm sure they will continue that involvement. We are all aware that District Five is our largest district. And I have to say that Supervisor Montgomery did an unbelievable job, attending meetings in all the communities throughout the district. This will be a tremendous challenge for whoever is selected. I read all of the applications and met individually with several of them. Some of them I've been acquainted with for many years, and some of whom I've become better acquainted. I've read all the letters of support for the individual candidates, and I appreciate that. The one candidate that has received a wide range of support throughout the district, from Auburn to the Tahoe area, is Cindy Gustafson. Ms. Gustafson has an impressive history for many years as a leader in every aspect of public service. She is well-connected with all the diverse communities and organizations, including environmental, business, nonprofits, and the very important tourist industry. She has shown that she is a problem solver and a consensus builder, who has worked well with county staff for many years. Now, I haven't spoken with Supervisor Montgomery, but I know that she has worked with Cindy during the past 10 years and worked well. And would be pleased with the board's selection of Cindy Gustafson as our next District Five Supervisor. Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make that a motion, but we'll hold off until we hear comments from our colleagues. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Holmes. Supervisor, why again?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank everybody that applied and all the people who rallied in support of their favorite candidates. I've been through this one other time. We had two applicants, not 20. So, it was really encouraging to see that level of interest and commitment from the people in the community and to hear all of the comments that were made. Many of the applicants I've worked with also have a high regard for them. And I expect everyone to continue with that sense of community service. But for me, the way I'm looking... But for me, the way I'm looking at this and ranking my applicants in terms of first choice, I'm thinking of it, who would be the best person to sit on the board for the next couple of years until reelection, if they choose that at the particular point in time and place we are in our history? And for me, that person is Cindy Gustafson also. Cindy and I met about 30 years ago. I was a lot younger. She has stayed the same. But I was on the planning commission, and we were developing the Tahoe City Community Plan, and it was contentious and difficult. And I sat next to my good friend Larry Severson, who was on the commission. And Cindy was a voice of reason and of courage and tried to work behind the scenes, it was clear, to bring some disparate views together, and did. Since that time, I've worked with her in her various positions and career. She's been a great leader. Her compliments are wide-ranging, but her sense of achievement, if you look at her career and her resume and the things that she's done, I think it'd be very impressive to all of us. And so my first choice going in is Cindy, and look forward to doing that vote soon.
Okay. Supervisor Gore, any thoughts you wish to share at this point?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for, for all of you who have applied. Being new to this position, I certainly know Roseville well, but there are many of you who I do not know. And so I had an opportunity to meet a lot of you via your applications and you coming up and sharing your backgrounds, and I really appreciate that. It is very clear that we have a wealth of experience in our community, and very clear that we have people who have given back to our communities. And that is, that's what makes Placer County an amazing place. So I do want to say thank you to all who applied, and thank you all for the work that you're doing in our community, whether it's serving on a MAC, city council, chamber, Fire Safe Council, and whatever it is. It is clear that we, as a county, are well-positioned to continue to do good things for our residents. As I listened to the comments last, was it just two days ago? It feels like a lot longer. You know, there were a couple of comments made, and I want to share something. My, my support isn't about gender. My support isn't about political parties. My support isn't about geography. I'm really looking for a colleague to work with this board, to continue the work that's going on in Placer County. There's a lot of good projects. There's a lot of challenges. I want to make sure that the person who sits in this seat until the next election is a person that can work with the board and work with the community. I think that's extremely important, that we have people who are consensus builders, who can look at both sides of an issue, that are well-respected. And there are many of you in this room who, who are well-respected and have done a tremendous amount. As I look at who we would want to serve with us as a board to move forward, I'd like to support Cindy Gustafson. I can't say her name very well. Gustafson. I've been practicing, and every time I try to say it, it's just not that easy. Anyway, I do think she would do a very good job. I think others, like Mr. Hanley, would do an excellent job as well. But as I look at what our current needs are in our community, especially the 60-plus projects that are taking place on the other side of the hill, there are some big lists that we have. And we do have somebody now who can hit the ground running as we address some of those challenging issues regarding affordable housing and tourism and issues up in the Tahoe area.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, then share my thoughts under, under the motion.
Move approval of Cindy Gustafson or take the seat of District 5?
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to appoint Cindy Gustafson to the vacant seat. I'll share my thoughts as perhaps the only other guy around that's actually been through this process on that side. And knowing what it feels like to be forced to a third vote before I got a unanimous vote, I'm not going to be the guy forcing multiple votes. I'm just saying, I'm not going to be the guy that will put somebody in that position. I'm looking at this very simply from the standpoint of, when I think about District 5 and its representation, we, the city of Auburn, Mr. Spockley, Ms. Mackey, who left, the city of Auburn is very well-represented by the Auburn City Council. We've had, I don't recall the last time, other than Regional Sauer, the last time we've even had any interactions with the city of Auburn formally. City of Auburn is very well-represented. Colfax is very well, so the two populations centers are very well-represented. Sitting in this seat as a member of this Board of Supervisors, I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that 90% of the issues that we deal with in District 5 are Eastern Slope. They just are. All the projects are over there. All the concerns that we hear as a board are over there. And we do have an applicant who has incredible experience in District 5 on the Eastern Slope. When you think about, what are the issues that we deal with up there? They're all infrastructure and tourism-related. We have an applicant who ran the utility district and ran the resort association. It is no slight to any other applicant that we have somebody who is very uniquely qualified to assist our board in deal with, in dealing with the issues that most frequently come to our board from that district. So our board making this decision today is not to be read as a slight to any of the other candidates who are extremely well-qualified and who I really enjoy meeting with and talking to. But it's just that we have an opportunity, I think, to help move District 5 forward with somebody who's been devoting her entire life in that endeavor. And so that's why I will not be putting anyone through multiple votes. So with that, we will go ahead and call the question. We have before us the nomination by Holmes II by, was it Wiegand? By Wiegand. All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry, you need a roll call to make sure that all four of us are actually here? Okay, then we will roll call.
Gore. Wiegand.
Yep.
Holmes.
Yes.
Euler.
Aye. Thank you all very much for your participation in this process. And that concludes the only item before our board today.